Yeah. It's a lot. Okay, responsible, uh, being six thought called to be ordered or sort of business.
I believe that states. In which is one nation undergone in the which is the hope with liberty and justice.
Uh, review of the minutes of August sixth.
So much.
Mention in a second. And for this guy.
I'm gonna go around.
Okay, very long, uh, seeing none or favor. And what I'm saying. Uh, members reports, well, sorry, Lindsay.
So, same still like, all you guys are in there like, that was such an amazing event, like, I know that our family had such a great time, so thank you for all that hard work, so I know that that is a ton of planning and what goes into that. Um, the other thing that. Right up before there was much of glass, like, near the bridge, like on River Road, and I noticed it again because of the parade, a lot of our sidewalks just have like a lot of debris and stuff on it, like. You know, fairly decent sized chunks of like rocks and stuff like that, so if we can get some sweeping, I think that that would go a long way for, you know, pedestrian, like user friendly.
Good, good. Concerts in the park, I took a lot of people that said that was awesome, I mean, lucky. It's pretty cool. Something better. Okay, uh, on that scene note with Lindsay, are they gonna come pull the. Coverings out of all our catch bases? Cause it looks like all the catch bases on Route Two still have the fabric in. So I don't know, I thought that they would sweep and pull all that stuff out, I just. They know if they were like wrapping up and they were gonna come back and do all that.
Yeah, and I'm guessing like too, there was like, the cement pylons that were down here like a tiny bridge, and there's like a bucket on it. I want to move it, is that just like, cause that's used to be lamp post and there's like light like going right there? So it's just me and random bucket of some little whiskey taggo.
So we'll hit that one first.
Okay.
Uh, and that is that that railroad. Equipment is there. And we can't touch it, the state has to touch it.
That bucket thing on that is.
Well, it's covering up something that we're probably at the state and we can't touch it. So when they come through to take more of that equipment out, and then they do the twenty, uh, Route Two project. And our sidewalk project, that's when it.
Okay.
But no, we've tried and tried, tried, Drew Ketter was trying, 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 we just can't get that done. The coverage on the catch basin, I've been in touch with the projects, um. Resident over seeing that, and I'm getting a lot of quick back, one of the things that we had to say was a crosswalk down by the school, they. Milled and paved over and everything with that. So we're getting a lot of calls from parents and just people, we generally are concerned that you know, shit running across the street with no crosswalk between. This intersection and downtown, so. I called and I didn't get anywhere, they said, it's not compliant, it's not a compliant crosswalk. Round. But it's gonna be a safe place. Didn't get anywhere, so before that, send their fair, he, uh, pledged that you will work with us. Are you able to tell me anything for? Uh, I know. Well, I promise I have a lot of work on, and I just got my text. Uh, okay, so, uh, with staffing adjustments, uh, here at the office, I posted for a part-time job. And great cat in Kaylee Gilson, she lives in Skoweg, and she's also a part-time office clerk up at the town of Soul, and so she's familiar with. Um, our software and the systems that we deal with on a regular basis, are just a matter of custom tailoring, have to. Uh, our processes, here we get to know about town, like answering the phones, one of those difficult things that you just take for granted, but. Uh, so far she's doing great, she's been here three full days a week. Uh, and we're gonna continue that indefinitely, and Soul has been very, very flexible with us, so. Uh, appreciative of that, uh, forward to the progress with her. Uh, kind of very strategic, remember that was a little bit of a hubbub back a couple months ago. Uh, almost to the point of hosting the last one, and this one was reappointed through caucus. Uh, and then this Erica Rose, her name, uh, then is now sent in her resignation, so that will remain a vacant position there, citing lots of support from the commission and the administration. Uh, cemetery is, the repairs have gone underway at Riverview Cemetery. Uh, making some good progress there, but not as much as they'd like to, so they're going to the committee, cemetery committee is gonna be looking to see if there's a second contractor that can come in and help them get things done. Um, get a lot of repairs, but cleaners, things like that, just have a.
Uh, I have a question about cemeteries, I noticed one, one that's near, is that like oak, something like oak, so. There are a lot of the graves are like, right on the road, and a ton of those are broken, I'm wondering if that snowplow like related and. You know, the Riverview one, there is like a metal fence, you know. If that keeps happening there, I mean, if there's just a ton of them, they're literally just like snapped off, broken in half, and it's all this stuff that's right along that like. Shoulder, so that might be something long term, like, I don't know what their. You know, their spend list is for the cemetery committee, but I don't think that'd be a bad idea at that spot where it's so close to the road. Just to protect those, I mean, a lot of those are from like the early eighteen hundreds, like I'd hate to see them get destroyed by a plow because they're so close to there, and if we could do anything. Even if we just did like kind of boulders, just some other sort of like barrier to keep from that stuff, I think that that could make a difference.
Okay, so that's a committee, they've kind of determined their own project guidelines and prioritize, but. Uh, sounds like there's, it was a couple of those just from the board, so I'll pass that back to them when they meet next. Uh, the EP has sent us notice that they are going to initiate investigations in the presence of PFAS, Eric Hilton laying out a page of slug. There is, uh, farm, I don't know, San River Road, there is an airport, an airport road, and then there's a private property of Warthill, those are the three sites that are here. Uh, and so they're gonna be coming into samples of soil and water at those sites, and then they'll follow that up with us. Planning board meeting next week will be canceled, I don't think they'll have a form because there's a training opportunity without law from Portland that's free, so. Uh, they didn't have really any trust in business there, they may schedule a special meeting, um. There's a potential opportunity for a small land flip plane permit on Skoweg and Bro. Uh, well, time will tell on that, I'm waiting to hear back from the chair. Uh, the permit by rule that I had applied for for Sula Park, that's just our staircase down to the river. Uh, for eventual doc supply for the permits, good for two years, uh, that has been approved. And I issued a request for right both, um, from doc vendors thinking this was a good time of the year to do that, for what they would recommend. Uh, for place to move to Sula Park to see who wouldn't proceed with that, so I've got a relatively closed window on that, so hopefully we'll get that settled by the next meeting, or possibly the first meeting in October. And the funding stats already been approved, and that's where this thing is brought over from back to you folks. Uh, knock up the tip committee, that tip committee will be later this month, as of right now, answer that is no, but they're scheduled for fourth Tuesday as usual. Tax collections, uh, that's taxed through September nineteenth, we're trying to be pretty far behind in terms of where we're going to be the first Wednesday of the month. Uh, and that's down by eight, seven and a half points, so there will be in terms of collection. Uh, library custody, they need on regular settle. Parks, a couple things there, the new building in Sula Park, we've got the three girls here that, uh, loving it, I think, uh, having it in terms of. Hosting the music series, being able to put in, pull out, put back in. Um, and then Uso Days, a lot of stuff downstairs here is now moving over there so that they have ready access to it for. Things in the park or other park activities that may be in town, so. That was great, uh, short circuit came over with electricity in underground forest two weeks ago. Last Friday, the internet was installed, and then surveillance equipment is coming, hopefully send around with them later, I kind of thought the order had been initiated, but it had not. Uh, so not to get too far into that, but we did have family wasn't down. Against public and private property over the weekend, so that was unfortunate, and, you know. There's a lot of stuff that could be said about. People, but you know, let's take some pride in both, uh, for investments in the improvements and making. It's just too bad that, you know, we get people that are coming into food trucks at Uso Days and they got whacked. And, and the town did too. Uh, we had no substantial loss, Val had substantial loss in her heart, but, uh, aside from that. It, it was different than what we're thinking.
It's a building that was donated, where it was during, so it is, that's where it stayed, of course, okay, so that's.
Yeah, uh, we were a little hesitant. And it, the location works for what we want to, it was close to the utilities, close enough.
Yes.
Um, and then the only potential thing, you know, as a part of a later discussion, is the fences are a little tight, we might wanna. Move the opening or just expand it a little bit, add a little bit of gap between the gates, but. Uh, the food trucks have a hard time, you could get a really good driver to get a food truck in there. But, um. And then the music series, so that was an amazing test, Ronnie said earlier, despite the last week being canceled pretty motoring. Uh, I'll take twenty percent responsibility for that, but, um. I was easy to push it over, I guess.
Some came up right after you made it.
Thanks, it came up probably with final, but, uh, I don't wanna get into that. Uh, thank you Franklin Saban, so we've got Alan Terry, we'll give Franklin Saban, so to secure that funding, and we're hoping soon. Not off the record, that we'll be able to make an announcement that they're gonna be wanting to do this again next year, so. Um, they're gonna have a meeting to talk about the ups and downs of all of that, and I think it's gonna be bigger and better next year, to be honest with you, and the food trucks were great too. Usulade, we've already touched on that, but you know, these three here, a handful of other volunteers are what made it all happen, so feel free to complain if you want to, but we're gonna kind of play our ears, because unless you're going to sign up for volunteer, we don't want to hear. Uh, and so thank you to them for making it happen, and all our businesses that are here, you know, it's just, uh, it's. I said the other day, it's something that we could do for not a lot of money, and it's because of the private businesses and organizations that support that, so. Um, you know, honestly, for everything that happened, the budget's gonna be under taken, I think, for this year's Usulade, which is pretty good, we just bring. Couple thousand people to town, so. And then the last thing, back to regular business, I suppose, is public works, and that is that Pike finally was able to get in here and talk to us about longitude, longitude and a crack on the water. So. They did all their testing, same one we want on, and they said there's really nothing unusual that they can find in the next part of the base, so. I'm not gonna fight with them, I talked to them about our relationship and how we, they have a good reputation, we trust them just to take care of things. And they said that they really appreciate that, so they're going to go back and. Ideally, take care of the cost of crack, seal the words crack, and then putting a skinny coat on top. While in preservation. Uh, I wasn't gonna just look the gift towards them, I don't admit it, it's the difference between keeping us happy or not, we'd be willing to call it fair on the skin, on the skin coat, but. Um, he was encouraging there, they completely offered up the crack sale, it's the skin coat that may be the issue, but. With the road committee, I think that's kind of what we thought would be, if we couldn't figure out what the cost was, that that was original. So. Okay, thank you. Um, board, uh, it's gonna be next month on September sixth. We're gonna warn number sixteen.
I'm moving the approved general warrant number sixteen in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
Motion, no, no, second, uh, any further discussion on that?
Guessing all of these ones on here, like Farron Brothers and Smith, what's, is it's like work that's been done?
Uh, no, Farron Brothers and Smith was, uh. Eight or nine thousand dollars worth of winter sand, and the rest of us crushed it us, we're getting it at a deep discount, uh, or we'll pit them, so. He and all, it's. That is gonna be a ninety percent flow proof for these. For the prior, uh. Depot Street, Main Street, and two deep.
That bridge that like, do you still have to go down to like Cumberland Farms, or can you get past there?
There's nothing been done in between yet.
Nothing, okay.
Bridge is set for September twenty-fourth.
So that's fantastic, that's like a.
That's love in the state.
Okay, alright.
There's gonna be a little issue there with parking too. Brian, Brian's gonna pop.
Yes. Two or not, that would be, the whole day goes. Uh, anything else on the discussion? It's been done, all of it, yeah, that's it. Well, on the special action on cemetery. No, this month, sorry, it's just, it's a quick supplement, uh, when I did sewer bills last month, I failed to send four sewer bills flat rate of zero with no usage. And so I've got the four counts that could send those to, you know, take a dollar with these, so. It's a motion, seventy-five.
Twenty.
Yes, please.
I am moving the approved sewer, coming in at two hundred and twenty dollars.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none or favor? That's it. Uh, public comment? Anything except Mike?
I've just been taking notice of. Roman, I'm. And it does not fit the specs in which you put out there.
Just talking about that.
So I just wanna make sure that it's well addressed next year when it comes to throwing that out to bid that. You did say ten feet. And one five foot width. Doesn't it cost too.
Valid.
Your ass.
It's crazy valid, so. Just already is. Very, but that.
And every, going further than that, did it ever get? Did anything go forward as to going behind like the guardrails? Cause that was a separate issue all itself.
We were. Kind of talking about that, about really what's the right.
There are places like at the bottom of Cemetery Hill, on the Main Street, where the Sumac has really taken over there. And all along. The whole way along the flats. It would take. A concerted effort from our town to have to go. Cut the brush that is.
Well, again, was really part of the discussion here about trying to limit our brush cutting and.
Right.
Is the right piece of wood.
Right, so it was just, I, I know we talked about that earlier in the spring, but. No.
Well, it's just.
I don't recall what it's, yeah, first of them, just discuss. Yeah, so. That was.
And if, we're getting it done, finding some sort of kind of spray so you don't have to do it here, it'd be. Key to.
You're gonna walk into another argument there, for something.
I have, I have. It does cut down. Cost. Sure. Since Mike brought that up, I was like, I noticed when they did each hill, and looks fine, and in most of those places, you can't even go up three feet, so not seen with funny there.
Well, this is true, I mean, I'm not saying that every place is, but like.
There are very limited places that are gonna be.
Long line of hill, you know, one pass of a five foot more. When you could really. There is plenty of room there.
Yeah, and we've got other spots where ten, twelve feet would really be nice, so that you could see when you come to the end of a road, and. Cause it's this time of year where everything is kind of just comes out, and is it, your nose is in the road before you're able to actually.
It's not really, I don't really have a whole complaint, I'm just saying next time. If this is the specs, that's all, if this is the specs that we want.
Yeah.
You'll respect, yes.
Uh, anything else under public comment?
Please get rid of the speed bump.
Never, but okay. Okay, uh, number nine, special action on six penny job, uh, license fee.
You know what would be sad?
Yeah, so you have the application that they are asking you to fund it.
Stop, this is just normal, right?
I think it's been going well. Yeah. That's what they did last year. So I, in due diligence, right, so we don't just sign off on like the licenses, guys. Uh, I reached out to the sheriff and asked him for his recommendation with regards to the facility. He reports that in the last seventeen month, no, sorry, twenty-one months. There have been no calls to sixty-six Main Street, it was all. Well, the business, so I think that's a pretty remarkable feat for Mr. Elias.
Haven't even been around that long, but yeah, that's.
Right, no, this is. I'll take a motion.
Move that we approve this, uh. Alcohol license application.
Yeah, it was a motion, and in a second, second, uh, any further? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone's. Okay, uh, discussion action on, on tip, uh, committee advisory recommendations. All right, first is at the. Yep, so this is all actively memorial, actually, down on Martin Street Road, the first is the naked tree preservation. Or things, to have the memo and the packet that we have in your, uh, information on this week, Davis Mail is here from Bird Street, she is the morbid paper behind this project. Uh, if there's a question, feel free to ask her. Uh, the recommendation of the committee is to allocate up to seventy-five hundred dollars to fund this phase of the proposal.
With that specificity, I'm looking at Colby and some other colleges to. Get some sort of, you know. Tie in with that, if we had any success with.
Absolutely, no, we've tried Colby, we've tried Thomas, we've tried ABC, we've tried you and that. We were looking to see if somebody could tie in their studies with environmental. Promotion of the actual part, the appliance and, you know, floor upon education, or anything, can take that on this project. And trying to talk with department heads and things like that, and it's always the scheduling, the support of the scheduling. So. Yes, so I'm gonna give her, and then I'll give you.
Yeah.
Uh, because we thought that that's.
They kind of wanted. They just went from a ton of mission divisions, only three, so with the. People aren't in sessions, they used to be.
Yeah, cause I started with Colby, because I had a relationship with them, and they some return to us. And so, not less of the organization, so it, so I thought that was an opportunity for somebody to come up and just. So. Okay, thanks.
Alright, so, individuals, I have moved that we approve the. Tiff committee on the amounts of accommodation of seventy-five hundred dollars for the nature free reservations.
No, for the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? We live, thanks. Like a thing, James, for taking my lead on this, you've got a lot of time in this, and just, if you didn't review your packet. Keep under the tent, should be back to see the, the next four months, hopefully. That, once you get this ground done, which is seeming to be a high priority, that, um, we're gonna be able to get into some more traction, that is some educational information there. Uh, really would have been since.
And so, to, um, in the next phase, in the, in the next, this next year involve the elementary school, and you get at least one. Teacher there to be committed to, uh, having their classroom learn about that and the history and. Probably bring them there, hoping, you know, so they get to, so the community begins to see it more. Often and have it in people's minds, and it'll really be, I think, it would be really be proud of it and, um. Develop that, okay, uh, community feeling for it.
True, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, right, I could hear that, so, right, uh, right, next is the, uh, trail maintenance building. Uh, this is a trail maintenance building proposal, uh, that was brought to the Tiff committee by representatives from the Sportsman's Association proposing. Uh, a structure of up to thirty by fifty, uh, the original proposal was called Steel Structure. I think now the folks that are thinking about this are saying, you know, give us some flexibility, uh, which structure might be best, um. And so the. Primary use of this building would be to store a new treasure in proximity to the trail. And then it would also offer. Other trail related storage for. The Sportsman Association, Public Works, and Municipal Services, we're gonna have things like calcium, we're gonna have to be able to, in order to keep, uh, residentially in downtown areas clear. Things like that, and then I.
That'll be stored inside there, is that even, it comes in a bag, or is it like delivered?
It's gonna be lit.
Oh, okay, alright, okay.
And, and so the Sportsman Association through, will working with me to get the municipal grant, as they have the money to retrofit a pickup, a pickup truck, so that a pickup truck would just. You know, commit and do it in this sphere. Uh, and so that's grant funded, so the other thing with this is that I did, the town would maintain, maintain ownership of this building, it wouldn't be a sportsman owned building. So it's gonna be really a town's grant to itself, where there would be some sort of a lease down arrangement with the association, and come through this board. And ultimately through town meeting, to allow for the storage of equipment, uh, possession, but to allow them to store the groomer. And then the other end game is protecting the property that's in angles, obviously that's a high exposure property, and the folks are coming into town, a hundred thousand dollar pickup, and. You know, the trailer and their equipment, and they would leave it there, it ought to be protected. Um, and so the budgetary ask for that is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred, that was by vote of six to one on the committee. They've also, uh, submitted a proposed act, which you can see, um, with explanation, background information. Um, and area, it's the lead that just on ride, they could take questions or offer, like, the case on there.
The only question I have, it's, it's a big building, so I mean, I don't know how big like the groomer is, but I'm guessing the calcium, does that take up a significant amount of space, like, does it need to be that big?
So I measured the groomer this morning. And it is nine foot six wide by thirty-seven.
Jesus, I don't know.
That is just the tractor and the groomer.
Okay, alright.
If we stuff a tractor in there, or, uh, rock breaking and, and a dater, uh, plus the calcium and a pickup, uh, honestly. I don't know if we can fit everything, because the town does need space for, uh. The internet connection and the power panel and all of that stuff, so it's kind of got the, uh, little office set in there as well, to house all this security stuff, uh, that no one else will have access to but the town. So it's really laying it out, grow privately, so that you can, uh, get equipment in and out without damaging a wall or, uh. The, so to speak, office of the town. Cause these are very large machines, and honestly, the next one will be larger, uh, this is a single seater nineteen something tractor, uh, and the next one will be. Cause who wants to go out on the set, uh, if it's just not even safe, uh, so right, the next one will be a little larger and a little.
Will that still fit, will this still accommodate that, or?
Yeah, 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 it, it should, uh, provided that we get the right size tractor, and maybe the rock break can store it outside or somewhere else. That was one thing I was thinking too, is whether you put some sort of, uh. Form of thought to size, you know, just things that don't have to be enclosed.
The right fence and then for you to.
Yeah, well, and additionally, like, what we're talking about is two different seasons, uh, like the groomer and the tractor and the plow that attaches probably in the winter. So ideally, we would sort our rock breaker, our tractor, and our own, have a shed someplace else where we can probably store it, and then store our groomer someplace else in the, in the summertime, and we need calcium in there also. Um. I think it's a sufficient size, is what I'm, I guess, trying to say, if we go any bigger, it might be a little overfilling. And if we wanted to blend in with the landscape too, and not be this monstrosity of a building, um. Be easy to heat if we need to like warm it up, you know, with something in the winter to just burn on something, so.
Yeah, what I'm saying is. Eat what you have, and then put bombers up.
You could grab them, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, honestly, yeah, uh, it's been a summer here, but if it did get that, that would be the option with the tall walls. Right, it would be any space.
Yeah, it's all kind of the same.
Yeah, you, yeah, yeah. So the ten or twelve foot wall really makes that possible, currently forced to have anything for. So, yeah, I think that will be the future of it.
I'd like to speak to the placement of it.
Yeah.
I know at the, uh, at the proposal, there was concern about the placement of it, and would they have to remove any more trees? So it is in a preserve, I mean, it's supposed to be preserving the trees, so, um, I think that wherever the placement is, they. There was a suggestion to mark it out. But I'm not sure, and then where it's gonna be placed, so I'm just gonna keep that people's forefront of their, of their setting it up and placement of it, so.
I went out and measured it.
They thought that we're gonna have to, but I haven't, I haven't looked at where they're going to place it personally, and I know it's part of the, of the Ashley Moon Garden Park, it's in, so. Um, and it, like you said, it's pretty big, so. So how did the placement look?
Uh, it's kind of hard to describe to you, but it sits, uh, often to the right.
Yeah.
And it is a little long ways coming towards, so when you look at it from the park, you'll be seeing the inner angle of the building, cause it is a drive through, uh. Right, so it fits, uh, parallel to the property line to the two trails that set there, right now, that you can see, that's what kind of sets it at that angle.
Yeah.
Uh, right, there really is no more pre-vein, some stops will be pulled out after probably, uh, mine. Maybe you want it solved, uh, but yes, and stump removal is really, I believe, often will have to happen.
That's good, I like.
Yeah, right, it, it.
That's that long, but I know that there's some concern about it, so I just wanted to bring it up.
We've just gotta make sure the property line exactly where that is, and then we'll know for sure how well it is fit, one way or the other. But, yeah, doesn't any more trees that have to be.
And it sits further back than what.
Yeah, it is farther back than we thought.
It'll be kind of stuck back in the woods a little bit more, you won't see it as much from the parking lot, as we initially thought it would be.
Now, it's gonna be my other question is, you know, if this is what it looks like, if it's something, you know, if we're gonna spend this money on it, like. Can it be made to, you know, look really nice, and where it does have those big walls for now, like, is that a place where, you know. Trail map can be put on there, something that's like a permanent thing, and like signage, like a.
Yeah, yeah, the one was actually tall.
Yeah, I feel like that's a great opportunity to kind of judge it, like, and add a little something extra.
We've talked a lot about like kiosks around the town, uh, especially with the rail draw coming through and economic development for all the businesses in the area. Uh, so the groomer shed, so to speak, is like, kind of going to be the landmark. Area of a first kiosk, it'll have like access to everywhere kind of thing, like. You'll be able to see where you're going, if you're going to open, what's your culture look like, hopefully, the ideal would be to like get to the next map section, so to speak, which would be like more intense.
Yeah.
So, and bang on, so.
Seems like that could be a great opportunity for the local businesses to like sponsor things, like to have, you know. You can have, you know, your store, and that can have like a spot on the map, that can have their menu and different things, things like that, like different gas stations, um. You know, cause obviously you want to be really nice and something that's weather resistant, it's gonna last a long time, and seems like that'd be a great way to sell those sort of sponsorships for that, some businesses that are gonna, you know, benefit from having their. Place of business as a stop, where people can see to get gas or food or whatever. Place of business as a stop, like people can see to get gas or food or whatever. Okay, so we're looking for a motion on the building.
Yes.
I move that we approve up to the amount of one hundred and thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars for the trail maintenance building to come out of support funding.
Same, mention the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those with favor? That's everyone. Public hearing on proposal general assistance.
Let's see, there was no public on that on that part?
No.
Well, nothing was asked. I have a.
Uh so I can bring anyone out of the business.
Okay.
Right on. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Uh so this is an annual thing. Uh this is just your uh local welfare, if you will, the general assistance program that deals with basic necessities. By and large, just like everything else, your maximums have gone up. You have the two maximum sheets this year, current twenty three, twenty seven, twenty five, twenty two, twenty three. It's pretty able to see where they are. Um you know, some of the kind of, not to be out of touch, but to say how we some of it look on that, but. Uh generally, without emergency situations, if you're an individual one and have an income of over eight hundred and ten dollars in a month. You don't qualify for the program. So it's really why you don't um see too much get expenses from here, but. Is statutorily required, the state GHHS sets our maximums. Um and so that's kind of what we're here for. So this is the time for you folks to ask your questions and as well as the public.
That's why you have a question. Um like with heating oil, we have something else that we also provide with people because I feel like we. Do a lot of assistance with that and is that sticking to this like framework for? The energy lighting didn't have or is this a completely separate thing from how we help out with that though?
So definitely completely separate program. This is an application income based, asset based program. Uh the. Other programs that you see, it's typically united way, right? It's all applied to the secure.
Okay.
That's just a, it's an application based, but we don't answer for needs based, which is like that. We primarily target individual leaders. Or individuals who have experienced uh. Significant coastal adjustments, I E was in. Yeah.
Alright, okay, so we still have that available for our residents. This is something entirely different, okay?
So we don't have the other one available for residents. If I can secure the funding, then I secure the funding.
Okay.
We also have access to Salvation Army funds that limited. We also have the information for folks to apply for their energy assistance, which is heating electricity. Uh heating fuel electricity through K C campus, the local administration that has a federal allowance for the winter expenses.
So we just need to approve the new twenty twenty four?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
All right, anything from the public on this?
It's.
Oh, no, just on this, just on this.
If someone, everybody, so if someone needs assistance, they come to the town office?
Under this.
And you would direct it.
Under this program, they apply to town office, we review all of their information, um and then we make a determination over the point of dollars.
And they need to be in orange walk residence?
Yes.
Based on these things.
Right.
And it's a new currently number nine.
Oh, this is a program that statutorily required as long as I can ever remember. The names changed, but we. The the numbers each fall change based upon CPI and things like that.
What pocket does this come out of for us? Do we just have like a general assistance fund?
We have a general assistance fund that is expended from and then they also reimburse a percentage of our expenses, the state does.
Okay, so will this number affect the budget that we already approved for?
No, then we approved the number in March, not knowing what this is gonna be.
So we gave ourselves like a bubble on either side, okay?
Statute allows you to overspend your assistance.
Okay.
If if you qualify, it's doing it, we, that we have reused it at this. Yes, very rarely do people qualify. It's usually something like if you have a burial expense, I just had one a couple of weeks ago. And well, they own the home. So the funeral home's gonna initiate that conversation with us. We're gonna say, okay, appears to be that there's a a need, but then when they own a home. Then it's the funeral home's job to go and lean that home and not the town's responsibility to pay this. Really, really complex. The binder I acted on is about. Yeah, so that's where. Uh what else do you have any else on this? That was the area. So we'll applause the public hearing on the uh proposed assistance uh ordinance provisions. Then if we could get a motion to move out of the general assistance ordinance, independence, as recently.
So.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those with favor? That's everyone.
Uh discussion regarding initial park reports.
That's my.
There's something a chair has asked us, I didn't want to place on your. All right, because we've been talking about the park and everything, we've been dealing down there uh. Right, and we were just looking for feedback ideas about what to do, what the park community wanted to see uh. Just recommendations on directions and things we can do so that uh. Next spring, everything can start and by, you know, this time, that's all done and. So I begin all and do better.
Really bringing off the left some volunteer. So um yes, obviously Azula Days and the music series was such a great success for us and we just. Be able to see our park grow. Uh we have such a beautiful location that's just not being used. We feel that that's throughout the season. Um and with the recommendations that come from some of the people that have come to some of these events and series that. Obviously, we're gonna always wanna ask for more money. So um some of the ideas that have come across from us that we've been looking to is. Um they're interested in the kind donation that we got for our building down there. Um why not see what we could do to utilize it more for the town? You know, um are there events that happen in the town that people need a place like that that we. Maybe need to have a little bit more chairs or tables for those type of things that they had to be able to do. Um what about maybe even doing a movie in the park kind of series, you know, Scott Deegan did that for quite a while. That seemed to be a great thing. I mean, it takes. A few hours out of your time, but the town seems to really enjoy that. And so, you know, obviously, there'd be a screen and those type of things coming into play. Um there was also a question about parking. So the music series really was great, uh as well as Azula Days. So this is a high question asked, but maybe is there ever a way we could do a bridge from? The end of the park, although by the way, the gazebo is too balanced to utilize their parking lot, you know, during those festivities that we do, so we don't have. You know, a lot of issues downtown with traffic or on that main drag. Um. Flags on Main Street, that was a big thing that we had come up. You know, what can we do to maybe use some of our park money to? Not only just make our park look beautiful, but our town when people are coming into these events um. The other things that were put up there were maybe doing skydivers at the airport, but I'm having that, bringing in a bigger. Something that's gonna cost a little bit more money than what we get for donations or those type of things, you know, if we have a budget to look out for some of these things. Um I know there's a Wilton does like um skiers in the river, you know, it's kind of like a acrobatic thing that. You know, some of these fundings that we've been up to, what we have for our budget that we can.
Didn't we have like wakeboarding? I feel like way back in the day, I remember watching Johnny like wakeboard on the river and they had something to do like River Fest like.
Yeah, years ago, there used to be. I know some people have talked to us about that, but um. Limited to what we had for a committee to be able to try to get some of these resources out there, you know, to feel those and find that we sometimes. The money will talk and we can tell them what we can do, you know, that yes, we can probably grab that um. And we've talked to a few different vendors and places like that, but not been able to say, yes, we could. Handle that type of a cost, you know, we kind of get pushed to the side. Um. Mr. Drew was one of this year. We kind of missed that part of it because we weren't ready to totally commit at the end of the year to know what our budget was. And um the other thing is trying to do some type of immediate overnight light show, you know, not necessarily fireworks, but there's those new. High protected kind of like shows that happen um out there, so. Um anything else I missed, ladies, I'm just kind of random here, so. So, yeah, I guess what our question would be is what could we do as committee to help? Bring and promote these things to our town. I mean, obviously, you can see in I'll see Curval and um Abby. But we're dedicated to it. We're dedicated to put our time and volunteer for these things. We just need to. Know where we can go when we have these great ideas and these passions.
Yeah, I think they were all excellent, really. Those are all really good ideas uh. Yeah, it's tough. I think it's really just a joint effort between you guys and us. Um either the ideas people and I think that we can provide the funding uh or ways to make that happen uh. And then Richard to sort out the finer details, uh especially like the ridge piece, because I know parking really is an issue uh. And if things do take off, uh it certainly would be even more of an issue uh. So I think that's all stuff to look at as a board uh. And then kind of have you guys in on a separate meeting, probably just us uh to go over all this and really brainstorm. Uh what the priorities are and what's the likely going to be able to make some of those extra things happen for next season. The lovely lady in the back.
I have a question. Um can they, like for some of these big items, because I know like some of this stuff is like five to ten, who even knows, kind of thousand dollars, but. Um if they plant it far enough ahead, can they put a proposal through to the TIF committee? I mean, is it not economic development? To kind of bring that level of activity to the community?
All the frame that you want to put your picture.
Right.
And that's the frame that we need help give development or. Obviously, we're the labor people. Sometimes these visions, it's a little hard to press you on paper, you know.
If you back in two of like events, like, you know, obviously the Sula days, you have like one day that's the airport, one is at the park. You know, I think about like our downtown stroll that happens around the holidays. Figuring out events that then come down to the park and how to utilize that, not just summertime when it's nice weather, you know, and you think about like your light show and things like that. That seems like a great opportunity to do. Christmas lights and different things like that, tie that into all that parade and then get people down there again. And now that there is a building, there is, you know, power, there's internet, so. All those things, those fancy light things now, there's the internet to do it, the power supply to do that. It seems like that could be like a pretty easy spin off to keep growing that.
I think you just talk your next one.
I think we already have it in the camp, so we're good.
I'm just gonna throw up there a comment. Uh maybe a fall event, something to do with pumpkins and autumn, you know, I don't know. It's we don't, there's not a lot going on.
We had done this task, we used to do like pumpkin decorating. The kids would bring down while they were doing the trick or treating for our town. So maybe that's something we could bring back for the Trump treat down.
Yeah, something down there just to utilize that area. You don't want to haunt the playground. And the other thing I was just thinking, I was talking about the water, um maybe having a fishing derby. Or something that brings, I didn't know if you're proud, uh you know, so they go fishing. It could be be an ice fishing derby, I don't know. Fishing and get the water and I thought the parade was a great idea to, you know, it was not good for that this year, the boat parade. But u- utilizing the river more, you know, and that.
Great, so keep it going full circle. Thank you, Pat, for your list. Expect more. I know you're still on those ideas, right? And don't limit ourselves to school park. You've got Riverside Park, which is just, you know, this triangle made of space, everyone, but the opportunity for that, so we've got. We've got the town square, um kind of where it's making it make some stronger than you're coming. The board's seen it and the TIF committee's seen it, but not many of people have, and it's gonna be a beautiful piece of artwork downtown. Uh but opportunities for those spaces and excellent park is gonna come together and I think that's gonna be another place where you can post. Events, especially in the winter. Uh ideally, there's gonna be a fire pit now that's restricted for town to show them.
That'd be great for like starting poker rounds for.
Where you just think investments might be and and, you know, think like we we talk about the box, the funding artists who are in place, their box system moves to the park. But, you know, the gazebo, what do you want to see? It it needs some improvement, right?
Yeah, definitely.
What do you want to see for that? So look around at other communities around the line and come up with things like that and new and fresh things, but that's. Not just parks committee, that's the public here and there, and that's for the board. This is gonna come back up probably a lot of things and recall this. Um and as creative ideas for parks and the parks committee plus go ahead budget seeking. And I'll take this thing away right now. This is the budget, the parks committee has. Operated on a very, very, very small budget. But the expectations of that parks committee continue to grow up as quickly as we just spit out all those ideas. And you've got popular Sula Days, we've got stroll, we've got the music series now, we've got the actual link park. We've got porta potties that we want more, more often and more places, and that all comes in this sense. We want the surveillance of this little park. We've got, we're gonna have new equipment in this little park. We're gonna have ADA, but a couple of new uh. Features, grant funded in this little park, but those are assets that we want to protect and that comes with the cost and it's recurring costs. You're gonna see their budget. Increase significantly this next year to allow them to continue to do what they do.
So I'm I'm not sure, like I thought that we had talked about it and it had been approved, but when you brought up porta potties, I know that down at our, there was. Something about like having it in an actual structure, so there was like less image. Is that like already in the works, have we already put that through or?
So we have a camp at a school park now, it's camp, right? The new building that the uh little rental home. Donated, but down to our extreme road, we have what's now called the fruit stand. And then that is an insert structure. It looks a lot like a dog, but it's got three insert spots for the.
Okay. Is that what we need to have at the Sula Park as well?
We may decide that that's what we want to do and that and it reduces vandalism because they don't end up. So those are the benefits that we need to look at the enhancements and and there's a lot of cosmetic stuff in this little park and rivers that are. That we're able to each know, so. Uh so these are the ideas to me. We're all, we're gonna run them by them and like I said, four or five weeks, we're gonna be back here again. To get your final ideas on it for the parks committee, let's just sort of prioritize what they would say. Keep under the tent, you're gonna see another department, probably on the next meeting this time, lots, maybe public works, stock code, investment payoff and. Long term planning for equipment, things like that, so we can defer to work committee. Very interesting. Anything else really more? Thank you, but it's very impressive coming in there and I certainly look forward to getting you guys. Uh other visits, I guess, get to a next week, but please.
Yeah, that's a moving point.
Well, that's none of us.
Um I first off, I want to say I congratulations. It's really great that the town, you guys are working together to create something. That will benefit the town. Um it's a huge expense. And it's a huge building, having gone down to the parking lot with my hundred foot tape. And measured out the spot where it was said during the TIF meeting it would be, I thought, wow. Who's gonna be left to call? Where's parking? Um it's a big building. Um. That being said, uh having listened to the TIF meeting several times to make sure I heard my facts correctly and heard their information given correctly. It's my understanding that it's fifty thousand for the building. And eighty seven five for constructing it.
Well, there's, so there's, it's not going, where you've seen, it's not going on the parking lot, it's going in the woods, okay? That, but the whole trees are being cut.
Correct.
Correct.
That are, are dead.
So.
Yeah.
Um. The remaining, the putting it up, we're giving the money to the sportsman association. Did you put up the building?
No, 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 uh we we wouldn't ask volunteers to put up a town built.
Okay, so that and actually so a town building that's being constructed should be put out to bid.
Well, yes, I suppose it could be or would be, uh that would be.
But that's a normal procedure, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, unless you had an organization volunteering to build it or a business attached.
Right, yes, maybe so, but. So who's eight paying, being paid eighty seven five?
Uh well, I don't believe anyone could be paid eighty seven five to build a building. Uh your math is quite perfect. Uh like, plot of the building.
Well, it's fifty for the building and a hundred and thirty seven.
Well, it's okay, so there's concrete, there's electrical, underground shit, but.
Okay.
But that would all need to be done, so that would be multiple contractors, certainly a builder or wrecking a steel building. Wouldn't be the concrete contractor or the electrical contractor.
Right.
So those would be.
But so the remaining would go to the subcontractor or the person who oversees the per, uh the clue and the payment of that group?
That would all be put together by this board and the town manager in in a bid uh or in another spec.
Okay.
That that hasn't been finalized by.
Okay, but this is just to approve us to spend up to that amount.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that is the set price, that the TIF committee came up with that number.
Okay, but still, excuse me, it's my moving time, sorry. I got.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see everything coming up, but yes, please, please.
Um so. If that's the case.
If that's the case, then.
I'll increase the view to King, right?
Yeah.
Why was this such a rush to have this, all of this approved at the TIF meeting? When someone requested an itemized bill? An itemized statement? And was told, oh, no, 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 we don't have time for that.
Uh, we don't, we don't, there, there is no itemized statement, or we allow this, so an estimate was put together by the club and the town manager. Uh, and now we'll go out to contractors to get bond pricing, uh, and then, right. A bid spec will be put together, in the same fashion that the fire states would just.
You know, I'm part of the tax base here, so.
Yeah.
I need to be concerned about the community and how funds are spent.
Yeah.
Um, that also, now, my next piece is. You are a member of the Sportsman Association, you are a contractor.
I haven't signed up this year, but yeah.
You, you really should recuse yourself from voting and motioning on that.
Well, I love, I, I, you need.
Because for the, for, for the select board approving the TIF meeting.
I shouldn't vote for it. What are you saying, I should recuse myself because of expense or?
I think you only have to recuse yourself if you have ten percent more financial investment in it. Um, best practice by nature, but then we don't have to.
Yeah. Like, best practice.
Yeah, I, I probably stay older, but I do appreciate your concern about my interest, so thank you for caring.
Actually, you, you are longer contract.
But, um, a lot of things, yes, but I, I certainly won't be building it, uh, if, if so, if that was your concern.
I, I, I think on that, if, if Matt were to put in a bid. He would have to recuse himself to bid or himself.
But I guess you, I won't. Yeah, I think it's, it really, I don't know.
To me, that are just wild right up there about how this whole thing was handled.
I, I'm sorry, you gotta go through that.
And, and then being, you know, not, not being able to make a comment at the appropriate time, and also kind of.
Well, at least you got here two minutes now, uh, so, thank you for coming in, and I, I certainly appreciate you at the start. Somebody, anything else, I don't want to cut you short.
No, so.
All right, well, thank you so much.
We have, we also wanted to speak on that.
Anybody else?
It was carried, in fact, in our community that it was up to, and that it was more or less. We might be east, but also once they get big and ask units. They won't need that much, to be completely honest, they went above because that was easier than having to come back, so if many are asking for more, more money. And also the fact that if we don't get this done before winter, then they will not be able to have their river, river trails that we as a town wanted to be part of.
Thanks, thank you. And any local contractors are watching, we don't want to deter you, go volunteer in your services. Uh, anything else for other visits? I guess if I could get a motion to add discussion action on MMA, or do delegate credentials to the agenda.
So much.
And any, any, uh, any further discussion? He's gonna break it down.
Yeah, someone's gonna be the.
All those papers add. To the. The generals. The generals, okay, that's everyone. So annually, maybe municipal association holds an annual meeting in October, and they are always late in sending us the voting delegate credentials for the town, we get one. In terms of all of their business function. And so you, you have to appoint somebody to serve as your voting delegate at that meeting. Uh, so. That's just kind of, this, this by law amendment, since the budgetary, because they have the board directors, but by now.
You definitely do that, right?
Yes, so, the, if, if you don't have any questions, the motion would be to appoint me as the only delegate, Ian Robinson, to support the vote. Yes, the MMA and business meeting on October fourth.
So.
Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all with a favor, and that's. You have an, any, the board have anything else on the business? Okay, uh. Do we have that executive session for you? We do not, I wish today would be appropriate.
I wish you'd fail the executive sessions.
What you're saying, any further discussion, we're tabled, right? Seeing none, all with a favor, that's everyone. Okay.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, this is, we do the second, any further discussions, seeing none, all with a favor, and that's.